All right. We are now reconvened in open session. We will now consider action on closed session items. Mrs. James?
Thank you so much for waiting.
You're welcome.
I move that the Board of Trustees pursuant to board policy FNG Local assign the Level Three grievance appeal of Alana Jackson to Richard Hightower, who will serve as the Board's designated hearing officer.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have discussion? Motion passes. Next, we have Board members' reports. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, this month, Board members attended the presentation presentation for Friends of Sugar Land Heritage Society, Fort Bend ISD Summer Graduation, and New Teacher Orientation Luncheon.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. I don't believe we have any activity reports tonight, do we? Activity reports, but we have special reports. Next is special reports. No special reports, all right. Go ahead, Mrs. Helliger.
Thank you, Jason, and Board members. Well, as you all know, the Board members do, and I wanted to share this with the public, on October eighth, at Blue Ridge Elementary, we will be celebrating my birthday with a book day celebration, and I'm asking for forty-five volunteers to help me celebrate my forty-fifth birthday. This is a way for us to promote literacy in our district and support one of our most needed schools in the district, and I'm asking that you all come out and help me celebrate by celebrating with some deserving kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Helliger.
Count me in.
We will now consider our consent agenda. Does anyone want to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Mr. Rubine, I would like to remove item ten A one A, the bond election, and item ten B one A, which is EHBB Local.
We have a motion by Mrs.
Yeah, no, no.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We will now consider.
Wait, wait, we're not done. Go ahead.
No, I don't have any others to remove. Do you have others to remove?
Did you want to remove A six?
A six, please.
Ten A six. All right.
Mr. Rubine, I move to, I move to vote on the consent agenda as presented, excluding items ten A one A, ten A six, and ten B one A.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Tossan and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion?
I have a question.
Mrs. James.
I have a question, just to make sure that the student code of conduct that is in the board book is the right updated version.
Yes, ma'am, it is. I looked at that this afternoon myself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Now, we will, what's that? Motion passes. We will now consider item ten A six. Do we have discussion?
You have to have a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve consent agenda item ten A one point A as presented.
We have a mo-
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? Mr. Rice.
Mr. Bassett, thank you for all of the information and work so far. I understand this is, we have a long-range bond program in two phases, but tonight, we're only voting on Phase One, which is nine hundred ninety-two million dollars. And I wanted to ask you, when it comes to technology, we are not going down to Best Buy and buying a bunch of Dell computers. We are investing in hardware and software systems, wireless connectivity, and so forth. Are we financing that for thirty years?
No, no, sir, we're not.
How long?
Well, it depends. We try to match things with the asset life, but what we're financing is, the average maturity is way below the average useful life of what we're financing, and we're going to maintain that, even if we do deferral a principal in our debt plan.
So it will be much less than thirty years, what, seven years or something like that?
Yes, sir, if you parse it out on an asset basis, for sure.
And does that apply to the white fleet as well?
Yes, sir. Those are a little bit longer life than the technology.
But we're not financing anything that very much past its useful life.
Definitely.
So no one should have any concerns about that.
That's right.
And if, if I, in two more years, I'll qualify for the homestead exemption. Is that right?
I don't know how old you are, sir.
Well, if I were sixty-five today, I would, my taxes are not going up.
Yes, if you file for the exemption.
Because of the bond.
That's right.
So that, that should give anyone that age and older some comfort in knowing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. Tossan.
Thank you, Mr. Rubine, and thank you, Mr. Rice, for asking those questions. I also wanted to point out, just based on something we heard earlier, it's not the case that we have three hundred and eighty million dollars unspent in the current bond.
No, that's not. I mean, we've issued over, I think that last slide I showed was three thirty-three. We issued the CTE. We've issued over three ninety, and I think we have forty or fifty in commercial paper already, but, so we've issued way more than that. But we don't issue until we have bills to pay.
Correct.
And so there's still a lot of work that has been done this summer, and we won't pay off on all of that until that's done, including, you know, Thornton Middle School as well, and so.
But all of the, all of the bond funds that were approved by the voters has been accounted for?
Yes, it's been committed, that's correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. Any other questions or comments? I'm not ready yet. I have a statement here that I'd like to read that I've prepared in regards to the two thousand eighteen bond. It's taken a full year of planning to get where we are today. The process began in September of last year when the Board commissioned a comprehensive facilities assessment of all district facilities for the purpose of developing a five-year capital plan. The results of the work are published in a comprehensive facilities report. The Board also commissioned demographic studies that confirmed that our district continues to grow and that we need new and upgraded facilities. The district then engaged our community by enlisting a bond steering committee of approximately thirty community members to assess the district's future capital needs. The steering committee and the administration together studied the facilities report and demographic studies. Their shared work led to the development of the district's facilities master plan. The facilities master plan is part of the district's long-range capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan includes not only the capital needs identified in the district's facilities master plan, but needs specified, but needs specified in the district's safety and security and educational technology master plans. These needs assessments were used to determine the projects that would be included within the two thousand and eighteen bond. I want to thank the members of the steering committee, Dr. Dupree, his staff, for the countless hours they dedicated to this effort. The district's capital improvement plan calls for the acquisition of land, construction of new facilities, renovation of existing facilities, improvement of safety and securing the district's schools, upgrading the district's technology infrastructure, and addressing the district's growing transportation needs. It's very important for our community to have confidence that our needs assessment was focused and data-driven. We also need for the community to understand and know that we have been good stewards of their taxpayer dollars. As we work toward completion of the two thousand and fourteen bond, we are currently under budget. We also have managed to attract and keep talented classroom teachers by giving teachers raises while still cutting local property taxes. Addressing the district's capital needs is vital to the continuous success of our district as we prepare our graduates to meet the challenges of a global economy. I believe our community understands the importance of making our facilities safer, improving our technology offerings, and building new facilities to meet the demands of our continued growth. I believe that they also understand that we cannot ignore the fact that the average age of our facilities is twenty-five years old, and we have significant maintenance deficiencies that we must address so that we can extend the useful life of these facilities. We have much to be proud of in our community and our school district. We continue to attract people from all over the country to the greater Houston area, along with around the world. Many choose to start new homes in Fort Bend because of our award-winning school district. We set the bar high in Fort Bend ISD. Our district is recognized leader in the state and the nation. Last year, our Board was recognized as the School Board of the Year, and this year, the district received an award for being the best large school district in Texas. When you consider that there are more than eleven hundred public school districts in the state, you can appreciate the magnitude of these achievements. Our success does not happen without lots of hard work, and I want to thank my fellow Board members for their unwavering commitment to pushing our district forward. And again, I want to thank the administration for its dedication to make it the best large school district in the state of Texas. Fort Bend ISD is an integral partner of the community we serve, and our success is important to the greater economic and cultural success of Fort Bend County. The state of our district is strong, but we cannot retreat. There's still much work to be done, and we hope our community will once again provide us the support we need as we continue to work to fulfill our mission of inspiring and equipping all students to pursue futures beyond what they can imagine. We will now consider action item ten, we are, I'm sorry. Motion passes. If I, next, I would like to take a moment of privilege and take a quick break. We have our communications staff who's waiting outside, and they are going to take a few quick pictures, so. Bring them on in. So Veronica, how do we envision to do this? We're going to take a picture of signing of the, calling the bond. Thank you all very much. I've never heard so much complaining in my life. Mind you, I've got a four and a seven-year-old. All right. We will now consider item ten B one A. May I have, sorry, ten A six. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve consent agenda item ten A six as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. Tossan. Do we have discussion?
Yes, I pulled this one because I wanted to possibly get an alternate to the alternate because I'm still working with my schedule.
Okay.
And I wanted to make sure that we make provisions for that during this meeting. So I actually would like to amend the amendment to include.
Amend the motion?
Yeah, so I would, I would like to move to add Grail James as the alternate to the alternate.
All right. We have a motion by Mrs. Helliger and a second by Mrs. Tossan. What's that? Yeah, we're voting on the amendment. Right. And motion, amendment passes. Now we're going to vote on the motion. Do we have any discussion? Motion passes. We will now consider item ten B one A.
Mr. President, I move to approve consent agenda item ten B one A as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, sir. So Grail and I, and Dr. Dupree, and Deanna, and Beth went, spent some extra time on this this past week, and we changed some things around. We added some things based on some emails and discussions that we had, and I believe that we have a good policy that, from the board level, addresses the Board's desires to improve and continue to evaluate on an ongoing basis our GT program. And so I think it was good that we actually had the audit on special ed tonight because I think that the current state of the GT program, and again, I'm not the expert on it, but just from, from things that I hear and personal experiences and personal stories, I don't think that there's anybody up here or out there that would say that we've got this wonderful GT program. I think it was, I think it's, it needs a lot of improvement, and I don't think anybody would really disagree with that. And I think that's why we created, you created a task force to get some good input from people who have some expertise in that field, and not all of the language that was originally put into this policy, in our opinion, was really necessary to be in policy. As we said last week, a lot of it was procedural stuff. But nevertheless, we did go back and change some things, and we do have a policy that discusses program evaluation. It's just not duplicated in here because we try to keep things as simple as possible. And the reason that, I went into one of the differences last week, and I'm not going to repeat that, but the reason we need to keep this at a high level is because when things change in procedures, if the evaluation finds that something is not working or it is working, we don't want to have to go back and keep revising policy. Policies are not meant to be revised every six months or every year unless they absolutely have to. And so I think that this, the changes that we made, I think that, that it shows the wishes and the intent of the Board to direct the superintendent to, to really make our GT program an excellent program, just like we've seen the results and the changes in the special ed program. It went from being quite lacking to, you know, we're on the right path. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Grail, did you want to make any comments about this? Go ahead, Mrs. James.
Thank you. Yes, okay, thank you, Mr. George. Well, my view is similar to Mr. Rosenthal. I will say that we added, one of the things we heard loud and clear last week was the need for consistency and fidelity of implementation. We heard that tonight also in the, from the special ed audit, that that continues to be a challenge for our district. So we did add a piece about that in this, in this policy to reinforce it. We also put in a couple of statements about communication of the concept of giftedness, the attributes of the gifted to parents and to the community, just to create an awareness, an awareness of the plan. So I agree with Mr. Rosenthal that we have a, a good policy. I also know that we have, or I've understood from the agenda items, that we're looking at a update to the GT plan to come to us in September. So at this point, my recommendation is to go ahead with this policy tonight. If we, as a Board, hear something in the update on the plan that we feel rises to the level of policy and needs to be included, then I think the Policy Committee can revise, can take the policy up again in the coming months and revise it if that, if something comes out in that report. I feel like the Policy Committee's put a good deal of work into this, and we've got, we've got a good framework and a good level of detail. Since I have the microphone, I'll address a couple of things that I heard mentioned tonight that I think were, well, they just raised my eyebrows a little bit. One is the dissolving of the GT task force that put a lot of work into this policy and then into, into some proposed regulations, I guess, that the administration has. So my concern is that I want to validate the work that the GT task force did, though I have not seen it, and I'll look forward to seeing it, hopefully in September, when we get the report or see, seeing a version of it. But I feel like that's a whole thing that we need to kind of get resolved, and that I kind of, maybe we as a group need to understand better what, you know, how the task force fit in and how their, now their mission is complete and why we're moving on a different direction. And I guess I'd look forward to hearing that in the September report. The second thing is that I heard a number of folks talking about learning opportunities and how the learning opportunities were not equitable. They seemed to vary all over the place, and maybe they weren't all that well-defined. We expressed last week, I did not express it, but I'll say it now, as the mother of a gifted child, I experienced him being set in a corner, told not to participate in the lesson because he already knew the answer, and that wasn't fair to the rest of the students participating in the lesson. That type of thing, I believe, still goes on, and that's not appropriate instruction for gifted and talented students. It's not a punishment to be gifted and talented, and we have to be providing the learning opportunities for our students that they need. We've, I think we, as a Board, understand that and we expect that, and that's why we worked towards, and Dave and I are talking about this policy, worked towards the learning plan and student ownership of learning, because then it's student-driven, student-centered, and, and so forth. So I just wanted to, to acknowledge that because I've suffered through that, as some of you all are currently suffering. The other thing I heard them mention tonight, or the speaker mentioned tonight, was about the regulations. And then, Mr. Rosenthal and I have been pretty clear in the Policy Committee that the regulations and the policy need to work, come hand in hand and come together. And I think there was an attempt at that because they talked about working on regulations at the same time as the policy. Again, I did not see the regulations, and I don't, we don't have them, and I'm not sure, really, I think this is a project that, as a district, we're a little behind on in a number of our policies, and so I'm, I recognize the reasons for that organizational capacity. However, we have to figure out how to get the information back around to the parents because all of these, all of these policies we've worked on, if we don't have the regulations that back them up, then the circle doesn't, isn't quite filled. And so I understand and sympathize with the frustrations of these
And Mrs. James and Mr. Rosenthal, as I understand it, your work was to create the policy, the overarching policy, to guide the development of more comprehensive, a more comprehensive framework, the actual day-to-day instruction, which is, that falls into the purview of the administration. And policymaking is the purview of the board. And so, Mrs. James, you feel confident that this is a good first step and that we should adopt this policy this evening?
Yes, sir, I, I do. I think that it is, gives a good framework for developing a comprehensive plan and regulations that can support classroom programming.
Okay. And Mr. Rosenthal? All right. And with the, with the GT advisory committee continuing, there's still that conduit to provide input as we're going forward. All right. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. Tossan.
Thank you, Mr. Burden. So, thank you, Mr. Rosenthal and Mrs. James, because those were going to be some of my questions, and you guys answered them. Because I'll say, I, I expressed a lot of concern last week and at the workshop and in between time, expressed a lot of concern to administration about how we were proceeding. I will say, I, I don't feel uncomfortable approving this tonight because when we went through, you know, you guys, a couple of you guys brought up special ed, and I was pretty involved in a lot of that. And most of the planning and the feedback and the work that was done was really outside of policy. The policy drove the work, but a lot of what was brought to us was outside of policy, whether it was procedures that were changed, we heard about organizational changes, we heard about a lot of things that were driven more by the plan that we were given. So, the real concern that I had was to make sure that we, I, I sort of felt like this was backwards, that we should have gotten the plan first and then done the policy. But like Mrs. James said, we're going to be, it is on our agenda to get an update next month. And so, I, I feel comfortable going ahead and approving the policy. But I do want to reiterate that I agree with some of my colleagues who have said that we are, we have a lot of work to do in the area of GT. That comes as no surprise to anyone. There's a lot of heavy lifting that needs to be done. Something really funny that happened to me last week, my mother-in-law passed away a few months ago, and my husband and I were in Louisiana this past weekend going through her estate, and we pulled out some of his old school records, and he had an IEP. And I had no idea, and neither did he, that he had an IEP. And he had an IEP because he was gifted, not because he was identified as receiving special education services. And I had never, I mean, these are the learning plans that we're talking about, and it was very eye-opening to see that in the state of Louisiana, y'all hear that? In the state of Louisiana, in nineteen eighty-two, my husband, who was identified gifted, had an IEP. And there were updates on the IEP, and there were things written, just like I see on my daughter's IEP. And so, I wanted to bring that up because, and we've talked about this before, that is our expectation. And really, we've, we've set that into our profile of a graduate, we've set that into our expectation for all students. But really, we've got to focus on these gifted students because they are special students. And so, I just wanted to say that again, that that is our expectation. Communication with parents is our expectation. We didn't have a special education task force, I'll say that. I'm really glad we had a GT task force. I know that you guys may not think it needs to go forward, but they think it needs to go forward. And so, thank you for validating that because, you know, sometimes, sometimes parents know better than us. And so, sometimes we need to listen to them. And, you know, our special ed advisory committee weighs in a good bit on certain things, and we're not done with the heavy lifting, and if the task force can help us finish some of that, then I think we should tap into that. So, I appreciate you guys reconsidering that because that was also one of my concerns. I think that's really all I have to say. I am prepared to, to, to vote on this tonight and to vote to approve it with the understanding that we're going to be getting a lot more information and presented with a lot more of the work that you guys have done jointly with the task force. And I also want to go on record as thanking our policy committee for working through this more than once, and thanking the administration and the task force. It's not always easy, and things don't always, you know, it's bureaucracy, so it doesn't always come out like we want it to come out. But we have good people who really want it to work, and I believe that. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, I'm curious. Mr. George, I, I'm just, just for, out of my own curiosity, what would you have changed? What would you like to see? What would you, what would you include in this policy that?
You asked me, put me on the spot. You already heard so many things that need to be changed. So, if you put me on the spot, ask me, what would you change? I don't have an answer. I could give you an answer tomorrow.
Okay, but.
All right. Thank you two. Motion passes. We will now consider action items. First up, eleven one A. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve action item eleven A one as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Next up, we have, or, excuse me, motion passes. Next up, we have action item eleven B one.
Mr. President, I move to approve action item eleven B one as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. We will now review future board meeting agenda items. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, sir. In September, we have got a gifted and talented program update. We're also going to be doing the full reporting on accountability and STAR and, of course, exams, as well as an update on our literacy intervention model, year two progress report, similar to what you heard tonight on the, on the co-teach. September, major action items, we're going to ask you to approve the tax rates for the coming year, as well as contract-related elementary fifty-one, the classroom addition, and a budget amendment related to the enhanced foundation, as well as an architect for the rebuild of Meadows Elementary so that we can get that started, as well as an interlocal agreement related to the city of Sugar Land, with the city of Sugar Land related to the reinterment of those exhumed at the James Reese Career and Technical Center. There's a lot of other updates, and we're going to be laying out a whole list of updates for the year during the next month or so that we will share with you, related to kind of the board's work, the staff's work for the coming year.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.